I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very much. All right, kicking things off with citizens' time. Is there anybody in the room who would like to come down and speak before citizens' time? Take that as a wild enthusiastic no. Anybody online who would like to speak at citizens' time? Okay, with that, we will move on then. Next up, we have 564, appointment of Assistant Town Administrator. Paul, it's going to you first?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have a housekeeping matter, as we're all aware, and due to our activities at the last meeting, town meeting recently approved in May, the reinstatement of the town accountant position, which the board interviewed and filled, and we appointed Ju Ling to that position at our last meeting. And now, we need to formalize the second half of that equation and appoint John as the Assistant Town Administrator to officially separate that out. And that's as simple as I can make this item here for your time. So with that, Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions, I can move forward and make my appointment?
Gentlemen, any questions before Paul makes his appointment? Mr. Runyon?
Thank you. Is it a selectman's appointment or the town administrator's appointment?
This is...
Okay.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
It would be right.
Correct.
Any other questions, gentlemen? No? Okay. Well... Oh, no. It's us.
I'll make a motion to reappoint John Dinesio the Assistant Town Administrator.
Second.
All right, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Five zero zero.
Congratulations.
Dinesio, thank you very much for continuing to serve the town of Burlington. How do you already get the...
Get the sign.
The tag over this as a citizen? That was quick. Within minutes.
Preemptive action.
You think the vote passed?
All right. Next up, 565, appointment of Assistant Town Engineer. Mr. Sanchez? Oh, no. Mr. Hayes.
Good evening. So, um, today, we're making a recommendation that Megan Cavalier be appointed Assistant Town Engineer. So Megan has been a staff engineer for the last couple of years with us, but she actually came on board when she was a student at U Lowell or UMass Lowell, and she spent three years as a student intern. And then she went out into the private sector, and then we were lucky enough to get her back after a couple of years. So she is an ace, just like all the other folks in the engineering division. She has a degree in civil engineering. She has a master's in engineering management. She's in engineering training, has her EIT certificate, and will probably be taking the PE within the next year or so. Certified MCCPO procurement officer, and generally a great person. So I would strongly urge you to appoint her as Assistant Town Engineer.
Gentlemen, any questions or comments for us before? Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With Tom's recommendation, I appoint Megan Cavalier to the position of Assistant Town Engineer in the Town of Burlington Public Works Department, and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Five zero zero.
Megan here.
Megan, congratulations. Congratulations. Well deserved. Congratulations, Megan. You've got the biggest smile I've had in seven years today. My goodness. Megan, you got family? Hey, you want some pictures real quick?
No.
No?
Sure.
Picture, at least. She wants a picture.
I think we do. Yeah.
I think Tom's...
Yeah, do one with Tom and then with the board real quick. Come on. Come on. Got it? All right, one with the board real quick. Come on. All right, next up, 566, appointment of a special police officer. Chief, it's good to see you.
Sure. Thank you. Good to see you. Mr. Chairman, tonight, I'm here to request the appointment.
Chief, pop one down. Try this mic, because that one, I don't know if it's just that mic or...
Better?
So far, so good.
All right. So I'm here tonight to request the appointment of Gregory Skiin to the position of Special Police Officer, as the board is most likely aware. This past Friday, Captain Skiin retired from full-time service with the department after 25 years of continuous service as a full-time officer. He was originally appointed to the department in July of 1997, graduating the Lowell Police Academy in December of 97. Came on as a patrolman. He was then appointed as an acting sergeant in 2003, permanent sergeant in 2004, lieutenant in 2007, and then finally to captain in 2011, just shortly after Chief Kent had come on board. As you're probably also aware, he is a practicing attorney, and he's decided to leave the police department and take up a second career practicing law over in Waltham. So as of this last Friday, he's retired from full-time, and I'm requesting that he be appointed tonight as a special officer to the department.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. And with the Chief's recommendation, I appoint Gregory Skiin to the position of Special Police Officer in the Town of Burlington Police Department, and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved. Seconded. Okay, motions been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Five zero zero. And we wish Mr. Skiin all his best.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are we gonna have him come in for a retirement thing or...?
So we had a send-off forum about two weeks ago now, a week ago, and he was moving right into the private sector. So he wasn't even able to make it here tonight because he is now slave to a different man.
They'll come in every now and then, and we'll give them their kudos of great job, because he's a great guy. He's a tough loss when we lose the good ones like that, you know what I mean? And right now, they're all great officers. So it's hard to not say, Greg, great job for the past 30 years in Town of Burlington to thank you. So...
So hopefully, he will make himself available at some point. We have a couple of other retirements coming up as well. So hopefully, we can get them in here as a group and...
You're not going anywhere right now. We're all set.
Not right now, sir. Thank you.
We're good.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, 567, Town Clerk Election Workers.
I got this one, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This is a request from our Town Clerk for the board to appoint poll workers for the upcoming season. And there's a list in the backup that encompasses all of the names, and Amy is out of town, so we offered to cover this for her. And it's a typical annual appointment that the board does on behalf of the Town Clerk. So you have the list, and you can make a motion to approve the list as printed in the packet or whatever way you find you wish to do so.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, any questions or concerns about the list?
Nope.
Okay, seeing non-electorate motion?
Make a motion to approve the list of election workers for the September election, or fall election, given by the Town Clerk.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Five zero zero. All right, next up, 568, approval of a warrant for the 22-state primary election.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, another request from Amy Warfield, our Town Clerk. This is a formality, but prior to every election, the board is asked to approve the warrant for the primary. In this particular case, it's a 2022 state primary, and Amy was just looking for a vote of the board to approve this, so she can get it posted and move forward with her preparations for the election.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions on this? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the warrant for the 2022 state primary election as presented.
Seconded. Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Five zero zero. All right, 569, update from our Economic Development Director. What? Melissa, come on down. Look like a game show. Thank you, Vanna. Get some music to play as people come up the... Melissa, how's it going?
Good. Thank you for having me. This is the second of four updates. And again, for the record, my name is Melissa Tintakis with the Economic Development Office. I'm just curious. I know I had sent some slides in, but they were a little later. So we're gonna just go through a PowerPoint. The second update is trying, if you recall, our last meeting, we did an update on the town center, the various initiatives coming out of the Economic Development Office. Oh, that's great. And now, what we want to do is transition to a little bit to the large-scale commercial and middle, Mall Road and Middlesex Turnpike. So with that, I just want to kind of give us an existing overlay of the area. A lot of you obviously notice, know this area. It's our major commercial hub engine of Burlington. This is an aerial shot. And part of when I first came here, economic development and to try to kind of scope out our economic development strategy, there was a lot of hand-wringing regarding the mall, the future of retail. Obviously, 2020 brought the pandemic, accelerating some of the concerns around retail, commercial office. And in the process, we were able to work with Mass Development and the Urban Land Institute to get more analysis, professional real estate analysis on the area. So what I'd like to do is kind of give you a little bit of an overview of what we have in the area, just to remind ourselves where we are with the existing commercial, I would say, categories here in this district. Reminding ourselves, these are the sub-districts, if you will. You know, Burlington Woods, kind of our medical district, the mall, and the district district, the cinema, we have Curig, and then on the other side of the highway, we have Blanchard Road as well as Wayside. And together, this makes up over 8 million square feet of commercial and commercial space. But predominantly, as we all know, this is, as much as we think of it as the mall area, the majority of the use is here. 61% of the square footage is office and classic commercial office. And that's just to kind of keep in mind where we are in kind of the regional context. If we go to the next slide, this next slide will show a little bit of some of the analysis we started to do with Mass Development. And this concentration, it's a little bubbly, like you can see, kind of, I don't know if I have a cursor, but if you can see up at the top middle section, that is Burlington. The high concentration of high-wage, knowledge-based, thank you, professionals concentrates in Burlington. And as we've been talking to Northeastern and really thinking of ourselves in the regional context of the Northeast, if you imagine, you know, kind of Maine to Rhode Island, and the corridors, they're thinking of building in terms of life science and advanced research and development, we are kind of at the midpoint. And so we are geographically in a strong position, just our geographic advantages here. That smaller map to the right kind of shows you kind of the next sub-markets and kind of our competitors, if you will, if we kind of look at it that way. Although, we all get along, kind of the next communities abutting us are still kind of, you know, the Lexington-Bedford area, Wilmington-Redding, you know, Woburn kind of gets clumped up with us a little bit, and then there's outside Lowell and Chumpstead. These are some of the ways that people break down the markets and the sub-markets. And you can see Burlington's, you know, major office, that's kind of the gray out zone here, and I don't know if you can see it very well, but it's really kind of reminding us in context, we have over 15 million square feet of office. This is kind of in the broad picture. And we're at about 9% vacancy right now, which is in the zone, I would say, of our competitors. Boston overall is 9.6. We are at, we also are at 9.6. Waltham's a little higher. Lexington's a little lower. So we go to the next one. Again, another illustration of where we are with the office square footage. You can see here, this is from Newmark, so this is more of a commercial real estate broker that focuses more on life science. But this is trying to illustrate, you know, where we are at the existing market is the large bar to the left. What we're starting to see is some of the office-to-lab conversions, which is still small in its scale, and our existing lab comparatively small, and some of the new construction, which is mostly the Norbloom Construction down in Network Drive. These are some of the, you know, conversions that we're seeing. Ten Corporate Drive, three Burlington Woods, four Burlington Woods, and, you know, four Burlington Woods has the new life science that had the recent grand opening. I know some of you attended that, which was Cambridge. There are smaller footprint life science companies that are moving into these spaces as compared to the Network Drive, like more anchor institutions. So this is truly kind of starting to round out our cluster, because to have the anchor institutions is one thing. To start to see some office conversions with smaller footprint life science starts to build up that rounded cluster effect that we are looking to develop still. And it's still small compared to some of the neighboring communities. And before I go into kind of current stats with malls, I guess I wanted to know if there were any questions on some of the larger existing trends that we're seeing.
Just one right now, Melissa. You said that we're at a 9% current vacancy. Do we have any projections on, in the future, like, say, five years from now, if larger businesses might be downsizing office space, right? We've got Oracle, Salesforce, I mean, just, you know, some Microsoft, right, some big names with a lot of office space. I know that they're currently keeping leases, but is there, do we know if there's any anticipation of adjustment of workspace?
It's something that people are, and people, I mean, myself, brokers, obviously, are keeping an eye on kind of office leases. We were able to visit Piedmont Properties. They own the building where Microsoft is. They also own Microsoft, Numance, Salesforce. And they've seen some pruning back in different markets. But I think one benefit that we have is kind of going back to that earlier map. The geographic location has helped keep some of the existing leases in place. But I think that's one thing that, you know, people, especially who are supportive of the life science market and advanced R&amp;D, is saying, you know, as things progress into the future, as leases come due, you know, will there be more pruning back? But there are certain industries that will likely still need that kind of space. And, you know, what are we, you know, that's something, part of our discussion kind of towards the end that we'll be looking at. I also wanted to just share kind of the mall stats, because obviously, the Simon Properties has invested significantly in the mall just prior to the pandemic. You know, they were on pause, but I think they're now kind of, I would say, optimistic about the sales in general at the Burlington Mall. Of their leasable space, they're about 90% occupied. They have five new stores under construction, 12 others kind of coming up in the queue. In terms of foot traffic, they didn't give me a hard number, but they are feeling that although they're not at the 2019 pre-pandemic levels, the foot traffic is relatively strong, and they're feeling pretty confident. They didn't give me, you know, how far off are we from 2019, but they felt pretty confident about what their investment has done and brought to the mall. I just wanted, yeah, oh, yeah, go for it. The next slide kind of just shows a little bit of a map. They also provide this to the Building Department, which is an update on the new leasable space, and that's what you have there. And before, yeah, I'll kind of go through this. So what are some of the things that we've done? That's kind of the lay of the land currently. What are some of the things that the Economic Development Office has done, you know, over the last, you know, 12 to 24 months here? And as I mentioned, we started really working with the Urban Land Institute in Mass Development. I think that really helps us, because that frames us, frames what we're working with currently, and that was even through the pandemic in terms of that amount of office, what trends are. And that report is finally coming due. We'll be distributing that within the next two weeks. We have a final draft that we're just looking through now. We're happy to share, just want to start to get some of the, you know, just organization of it correct before we share it. But also through that process, we had great stakeholder engagement, and I'm really proud of that effort, because we had reached out not only to property owners, but to business owners, the leasing agents, as well as residents. And throughout that process, you may recall, we had over three community forums with over 80 people almost on average at each. So we felt that was strong. It was online. And that's, that report will kind of inform the next steps of how we want to look at zoning and the regulatory framework for the area. But even in doing so, I want to say that we had more engagement with the hotels. We brought them together. We did submit an application that unfortunately weren't successful with, but the positive piece of that application is that we've engaged with the hotels in the area and have built those relationships with the hotels. And there's a real interesting synergy as we work together. As new businesses come in, we're able to share that information. They're able to reach out and say, here, we are, you know, hotels, you know, we are, you know, the accommodations and corporate services that you need when you come to town. And that's been a real positive. We've also been able to work to amend the outdoor seating amendment, to facilitate that seating arrangement, although we need to, I would say, we need to work on sharing that information better with businesses. The experiential uses has been a benefit, especially to the mall. And we're starting our, what we call, business spotlights and visits. So that's kind of a softer side of things, but it really provides a lot of insight into what, you know, businesses are looking for and how they see, you know, locating their business in Burlington. And that's been really positive as well. So as I mentioned, that we're bringing that report back. And on top of that, I mean, I think they have not made a public announcement, but will do so tonight, in that the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs has awarded us $50,000 based on the work we've done to date in the Mall Road corridor to start moving forward on a new regulatory framework. Meaning, like, how do we start thinking of the Mall Road and Middlesex Turnpike to make us more resilient in the future? And that's what that money will help us do. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. And these pictures, these are just a couple pictures of some of the visits and spotlights that I had mentioned. We obviously, you know, the Cambridge, I mentioned that, was a grand opening. But prior to that, we walked through the space to understand, you know, kind of their permitting process and any, you know, kind of advanced needs. We helped them with some signage. We connected them with some hotels. A little bit more of that concierge-type hand-holding work from the Economic Development Office. We met Piedmont. That's the bottom right corner there. They're the property owners. They are a REIT. They're based out of Atlanta. But one thing that was interesting with that visit was learning, you know, their CEO is very much into infill development and learning how to make the overall space more walkable and provide more connectivity. In fact, they've been, you know, willing, they're willing to kind of talk with us, because what they've done in Atlanta is provide some immediate shuttle service. It's a public-private partnership. And they've been able to fund some of that, you know, with the city. And I thought that was another good example of some of these things that you wouldn't find out unless you're out there and visiting some of the businesses. The bottom left is, you know, a visit to Northeastern. We invited town meeting members, the commercial brokers, and some of our new life science tenants in Burlington, in particular, Cambridge, did come to that. And it was great. Peter Boynton toured us around. There were many startup spaces, and in fact, you know, it has led to another connection for Peter Boynton. And one of our real estate owners knew, they're called Jumbo, and they own, I'm forgetting now exactly what building they own in, it's in the Burlington Woods area. But they're excited, too, because that connection, they hope to grow some of those spinouts and keep them in Burlington, what we're trying to do in general. On the next one, again, this is more of a softer visit, but it's kind of on the very shock local. As you can see, these are startups in Wayside Commons. It's Wilder Company that's really trying to cultivate a little bit more of an interesting mix. They, their whole lifestyle center has suffered a little through COVID, and so they're re-tenanting it, but they're trying to be a little bit more creative with short-term rentals, like pop-up, essentially pop-up retail in their space. And so you have Anna Casalisa, who is down, she's a Burlington resident, and she makes clothes, and she, you know, kind of works in cooperation with other women-owned businesses, kind of a little bit of a unique blend there. Then there's Lorraine, the bottom left. She's doing more made, kind of Etsy-type products in hers. And then there's The Art of Wear, which is kind of a boutique sneaker store, definitely more of a pop-up. And he's also trying to figure out his kind of market, if you will, but it's trying to bring something a little different to Burlington. So that's kind of, you know, where we are today. And then what we want to do is, part of, you know, the work in the Economic Development Office is to look at long-term economic development, really start thinking strategically about where we want to be. And that's kind of been the work that we're building off of with the Mass Development Report. And what we're finding is, you know, there's a potential, if we go to the next slide, actually, John, if you don't mind, that's the cover of the report. And then there's one more, I think. Yeah, this one. And this one looks at that same area. And the green is conceptual. That's just how, you know, the waterways would be moving through the space. But if you take a look at those white spaces on the map, those add up to over about 100 acres of potential infill development. But our current zoning does not allow that very easily. So what we're looking to do is working with, you know, planning, working with the property owners, is to how to best create a new framework that allows us to unlock that development and also incorporate sustainable development principles as we think about a new regulatory framework and think about the form, you know, keeping it scaled to something that's appropriate for us, but also looking at leveraging our existing infrastructure and making that, you know, making that asphalt work for us. You know, that's really, all those are really, at the end of the day, are parking spaces. So how can we make that, you know, more valuable for us in the long term and make a village for, you know, Burlington residents of the future? So those are the things that we'll be working on with the grant. So those are the things that we'll be working on with the grant that we got. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of the, kind of broad landscape as we stand.
Gentlemen, questions, comments?
Yeah, thank you. As long, as long as we're focusing on Mall Road and Middlesex Turnpike area, I thought it might be appropriate for me to bring up a subject that has been batted around for goodness, good 20 years now. And that is the Burlington Mall Road stretch. As you know, it's, it's very straight, relatively wide, and it's relatively unattractive, but rather barren. There's a lot of concrete and lampposts up and down the street here. We've talked about, but the possibility numerous times now over the years of perhaps putting up seasonal-style banners or something on those, those poles along the Burlington Mall Road there. And we keep running into speed bumps in terms of signed bylaws or other, other excuses for not moving forward with some sort of enhanced enhancements for, for that stretch of roadway. They could go a long way, especially for folks who are coming off the highway, coming to Burlington for the first time. You know, I, I will point to Barrika, if you've been up to Barrika Center lately, they made some, some roadway improvements up there. They added architectural lighting, they've got seasonal banners on those poles as, as well as live plants, seasonal plants as well. It looks very attractive up in that area. And, you know, I'd like to somehow try and get past those speed bumps that we've been running into for the past 20 years and maybe, maybe put something in place like that.
Yes, so in terms of kind of, there's a little bit of a blend of streetscape and safety, but I think what we could do, Selectman Runyon, is kind of explore some of the history on what we have there currently, which I know that they had some, you know, posts that could hold some banners. There's also been some growing interest, I would say, from some of our large-scale property owners on the beautification, because the more investment we have there, the more we want to actually make a really handsome gateway corridor through the Mall Road and Middlesex Turnpike. So I think there's growing interest in that. I believe, you know, planning has had some work, maybe with the district, that looked at some streetscape design, so we can revisit that. But that's also, you know, would be part of this, you know, trying to look at that. So maybe there'd be a little two-phase, something in the short term with immediate banners that make you, you know, hold on things, and maybe more long-term street design, I think.
Sure, I think anything would be an improvement there, it's a bit of an eyesore.
We'd be happy to look into the, the history of the banners.
Yeah.
But I think that, based upon Melissa's work and what we hope to have as a byproduct of looking at these parking lots for their future, is to look at those corridors and how do we make them, you know, great stretches of road that people want to walk, walk along, bike along, I don't know, eat outside on, you know, how do we make grander improvements to the Boulevard?
Well, you know what I'm thinking, you know, she's, Melissa's had great success in some zoning changes and so forth, and so she seems to have some influence with the folks that make some of those decisions. Be happy to work with you if you think this is a worthy endeavor. I'd be more than happy to lend my voice to those some folks.
Yeah, I think for sure, for sure, we'd all want to see an improved Mall Road as part of, part of the future that we'd like to see.
Great. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To follow along with Chair Selectman Runyon said, he more than I, for years, tried to change, because some of the integrated sign-bylaws updated, some are still written going back to the 60s and the 70s and 80s. How many times do we even attempt that committee? We try, and we just never, couldn't get, it took.
Take any traction.
Couldn't take any, yeah, that's, wait, wait a second, no traction. In order for the whole of this to succeed, I think one of the things we need to look at and definitely change is some of the old outdated sign-bylaws. And if, you, you may have more influence than we've had because we had no luck doing it. That, that's a sticking point, and I think it was that the banners violated the sign-bylaw. That's probably why they had to come down, I think, if I remember correctly. There's so many, that's a sticking point of the sign-bylaws. And if we can come up with a solution for that, I think that would make this whole thing so much more appetizing for businesses to come to this town because they don't want to have to fight and, you know, if one business has a sign on that building, only one sign's allowed, but then they have to go to the Board of Appeals to get their own sign put on it. Try to streamline, it would streamline the process a lot too. So the sign-bylaws in this town need some work. I'll leave it at that.
Joe? Me? Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry. No, I have no comments whatsoever. That's a great presentation. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Melissa, can I get a copy of the PowerPoint to take a look at?
Yes, yes.
Good stuff, thank you.
Chairman Priest, if I may respond to Selectman Tiggus?
Yeah, of course.
I, thank you. In regards to sign-bylaw, I just want to say that, you know, we have been, I have been, you know, talking to Sally Willard, she's been heading up a sign-bylaw review committee under the ZBRC, and it did start in the town center. But I know one component that's probably pretty visible to a lot of people that we could look at, if, you know, maybe if the board was inclined, probably would be the mall sign, in fact. I mean, I think the mall sign has, there's some controversy there, but in terms of the, the challenges to, you know, change the letters out, to update it, to make it new, and some of the letters fall off, I think that sign alone could start to be a little bit of a catalyst for, you know, street enhancement, depending on, you know, kind of what can be presented, what's possible, but even starting something like that, so.
Well, all this kind of brings me to what I wanted to say, which was, and again, fantastic presentation, thank you. This series that you're putting together is, I think, great for the board to kind of see, focus it on one thing at a time, but also begin to see the whole big picture of the things that you are working on. I think it's great that we're getting collaborations going and that we're trying to, you know, have these conversations. Everything that you said about, you know, the mass development, you know, Urban Land Institute, the $50,000, you know, this would be fantastically helpful. Now that we're coming out of this with, with the initial report in a couple of weeks, what I'd like to see is, is a funnel down of what our next steps are, right? And how we begin to action on that? What is, what are things that we can focus on from a government-public standpoint? What requires a public-private partnership? You know, because I think to, to Mike and Joe's point, right, like, these are things that we'd like to see. And at the time, you know, there, there wasn't a sign-bylaw committee, but now there is. So, you know, can this board help provide conversation to say, these are things that we'd like to see, so as we're planning for things, let's, you know, get our, and decide where, you know, that, that falls in our action plan? Because that way, we're, you know, projecting out over five, 10, whatever, years of things that we'd like to see and things we'd like to work toward for this bigger picture, which is going to have to be piecemealed. I think originally, this was the whole point of 3A overlay committee, was to, you know, create a larger vision for something and then figure out how to, you know, piecemeal it. But I think that, you know, Melissa, you're a great gateway to all the conversations that need to take place, that we might not always be able to be privy to. You know, you can, you can bridge the gap between boards and committees and kind of help that happen. Just one more thing for your plate, right? You know, but, you know, my whole thing was, was next steps, right? Like, how do we begin to take this, you know, consulted, conceptualized notion of what could be, right? And start to bring it down into actionable things for us to take care of, to achieve that? And where those roadblocks might be so we can, you know, hopefully find a way around all, if not some of them. So I also just want to comment that I had no idea that Division of NASA was here in town.
Oh, yeah.
You know, General X-ray Observatory, you know, just, again, like, we talk about, like, the, the pool of, you know, things that are happening in town. I don't think, I mean, like, I don't think anybody in this room really knew that NASA was kicking around, you know, doing observational studies in space.
I mean, I feel like that's, it's fascinating, that's, you know, NASA, Harvard's Astrophysics Department, Northrop Grumman and Smithsonian. Thank you, Rich, because Rich was there, covered it. And it was amazing that, you know, they are pulling data from, you know, the universe, 15 million light-years away, and it's coming down into Burlington, people are accessing that data, just like, you know, you know, the Broad Institute will be doing in a different way, kind of the inner science will be pulling all of that together and then accessing it for, you know, kind of the global scientist, scientific world. But yeah, I mean, I, I'm excited about kind of the long-term vision because I feel like that's, you know, if you, if we're able to set up a strategy, you know, the town of Burlington can really start to think of themselves as, you know, lack of a better term, but the developer and the, you know, the people who shape the land that, you know, is, is used for their future versus waiting for the developer to come to you and set the regulatory framework, we can, you know, work to create a framework that we agree upon, you know, and bring to town meeting for, you know, their approval or, you know, or not, if, you know, that may be the case. But I think that's what we want to strive for over the next 12 months.
Awesome. All right, thank you, Melissa. Stick around though, because you're up next as well.
All right, thank you.
All right, so moving on to 570, our Economic Development, four one-day liquor licenses.
Thank you. So transitioning to the small-scale commercial environment and kind of what defines our area. Hi, Christine. I can see Christine Healy, she's right there. Good, thank you for being here. This is our Town Center Beer Garden proposal. And Christine, do you mind to introduce yourself?
Yeah, absolutely. Hello to everyone, I see some familiar faces from last fall. My name is Christine Healy, I'm the founder of Crafted Company. We're a local craft beer events company, and we worked with the town of Burlington, with Melissa, to put on the Pocket Park Beer Garden last fall.
Thanks, Christine. So this year, we're trying something a little different. Our informal working group has been made up of a couple of business owners, the rec department, Selectman Runyon was on there, and our property owner, Mike Murray. And we were trying to think of trying to do an event every season, that got a little challenging. So what we're trying to do is revisit the Fall Beer Garden. This time, we're trying to model after some of the programs that we've seen in other communities where it's reoccurring. So we're not just bringing people in for a one-day event, but we're trying to bring them into town center over a period of time. So you have, you know, four times or four chances to come into the town center to have kind of a beer, hang out, and maybe bring that foot traffic and hopefully, you know, spending and awareness for the town center. The location would be the same as proposes last year. This map kind of indicates the Jersey barriers are the orange. We've been working with police and facilities. It's yet to be determined who will be able to install the Jersey barriers. At this point, we're hoping DPW or Highway can help us install them for each Thursday. The fencing is straightforward, the beer service and the ID check-in will be by Crafted. Now, Christine, if you want to talk a little bit about that and the layout, and maybe how it worked last year, and how you're seeing it work this year?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think most things will be fairly similar to last year when it comes to working with the security team to check everyone's IDs, do wristbands, things of that nature. When people enter, the security team will check their ID. If they are over 21, they'll get a green wristband. And any minors in attendance with their parents, kids, I know it was a very family-friendly event, just will not receive a wristband. And then when they come up to the bar, we'll just ask to see a wristband before they are served. With the, I guess, a slight difference in the beer service this year is that we're working to engage the breweries that will be featured a little bit more so that they are there to assist us with the serving, either distributor representatives that'll be there, or brewery staff themselves that'll be there serving. But again, all tip-certified bartenders, so very much, you know, following all of the sort of serving and safety guidelines as we did last year.
Great, thank you. The next slide kind of just kind of highlights the operation. What we're proposing is roughly 4:30 to 8:30, and that's the fourth Thursday, starting the 8th of September. Trash and recycling last year was held, supported by Facilities Department, so we're assuming that will be the case, that needs to be confirmed. Police detail, we are working with Chief Brown to identify that with what would be needed and what would make them feel, you know, confident in moving that forward. He doesn't have any issue now, he emailed me as of today. And security, as Christine mentioned, will be, you know, private security. Foods, this year, we have started engaging in all the area, all the town center food service, restaurants and eateries. So just so folks know that the first write-up refusal is really from our local businesses to provide food. But as we talked about from our last meeting, staffing and the challenges that are presented currently for small businesses does make it difficult, and they are aware that we would like to serve food, that we might have to engage in a food trick, if, you know, no one can really provide the food service. But we are trying to make that as easy as possible, whether it's, you know, tents or, you know, tables, you know, or anything they want to provide. We're not seeking donations, we're not looking to make it, you know, more onerous on them in any way. And it's really an opportunity and an invitation for them to provide food if they have a creative way of, you know, making money and seeing that as an opportunity for them. Music, you know, Ellen Murphy's exploring maybe the Real School of Music, the high school. Last year, we had a great volunteer, Jordan, from the high school who DJed, so we haven't reached out to him yet, but he was great last year, so we want to make sure he's available. If he's available, we'd love to have him back. And then the next thing, these were, this was just in your packet to, you know, reinforce, you know, why we're doing this. Is it just, you know, for the heck of it? It's really rooted in the idea of, you know, place-making, engaging people in, you know, the, the space in where they live and reimagining this space currently. And then we had success last year as a proof of concept, we did have over 500 people on the Saturday, we did have good weather, and it was a longer period, but we were, you know, we feel positive about that. So this will be, you know, a test case in that, you know, it's a different day that was recommended by the informal working group, but we're excited about that, trying it out. And then, you know, we had our, you know, master plan, our local recovery plan, as well as our kind of place-making playbook. Those are all reports that kind of point to the fact that programming and bringing people in is one of the strategies to support some of the small businesses. So that's what we're kind of trying to, you know, we're connecting the dots with those larger plans as well with this effort. I don't know if there's any questions at this point on the beer garden for Christine or Melissa?
Yeah, so, Mike, you want to go first because you run the?
No, no, I mean, I thought the last, of last year was quite a success to feed back on, and I perceive was positive, I didn't hear any negatives. So I'm certainly willing to support some licenses for four events in September.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. We were ready for a meeting on something else that's coming up tonight, but it's awful Mike. Earlier that, that course of that time, we went over all this.
Already, and, uh, I think both of us were in total support of it. I think, uh, going the four nights for the month is going to be great, uh, spreading out a little bit, trying to get some more people involved instead of just a one-day event. Uh, I think it, I think it should go over fine. Um, I don't see any glitches in it, I don't see anything that we have to be worried about, everything's recovered, the, um, security, the police, the food, whether or not the vendors are going to come from the restaurants that are in their area, or we're going to get a food truck down there, but I think it should be really good, you know, so, like, in support of this.
Awesome, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I, I'm in full support, I thought the event last fall was wonderful, and I got great buzz around town, everyone was excited, and everyone's excited for the potential for this to happen in September, and I'm really fascinated by the concept of place-making, I think that is such a great thing to help people reimagine, um, new things in familiar places. So, I mean, who in town hasn't driven by Sunluck in that area? And, um, it's just a very cool thing, and I'm looking forward to it, and I have given it full support, love it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chang's walk, sorry.
Play that anywhere.
Switch in. Run the gamut of names.
Just see if we were paying attention.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Melissa, a couple of weeks ago, we had, uh, common Crafted here, and they're doing something, some, some like this, but they're theming their events. Are we theming them, or have you thought about theming so that it's different from one night to the other?
Um, at this point, we haven't thought of theming it. The one thing that we have thought about, um, is trying to see if there's a way we can tie it into, uh, people helping people, though. Like, if there is, like, a, a surplus, maybe it could be, uh, a charity to them because they are new to the town center as well. Again, you know, be, the theme being the town center and small business, if, you know, but we don't have an Oktoberfest theme to it at this point, nor, you know, I think they had Tiki Bar Night. So, yeah, those, it's, it's definitely more fun when you have some good names, so I think we should probably look into that, maybe Christine, if you have some ideas.
Christine, um, the one thing I'll mention that we have been, uh, discussing a little bit, just to, like you mentioned, bring a little buzz to each night individually, uh, is featuring a different brewery each of the four nights, um, and really highlighting that specific brewery. Um, so the distributor that we worked with last year, Atlantic Distributing, uh, they, they were a great partner last year to have, um, and have a great lineup of breweries, including Mighty Squirrel, uh, Lord Hobo, Medusa, and then also some other New England breweries. So we're kind of working with them to see, uh, can we highlight different breweries? So maybe people will come back multiple nights because it'll be a new lineup of beer, maybe another small business they haven't really seen before, so I think that'll be, hopefully, a good way to pull people back in week after week.
One question.
Yeah.
Um, last year was fantastic, I've got people asking me, when is it going to happen? And I give them the dates, but last year was a little tight, a little, it was small. And I'm looking at the map right now, I'm thinking this areas, and I think I mentioned this at that, on that date last year, there's certain parking spaces and stuff that we can incorporate into this to make it a little bit bigger venue.
Maybe push it back and hurry it out a little. Spaces along either, as, uh, Selectman Espel said, Sunluck's, uh, storefront, or maybe in front of the True North area, so there's, I think there's a little wiggle room down there with regards to expansion. And maybe even push it back and maybe relocate the port of the restroom to a different area. But it was, it was a little tight, um, and I just think that it was so well-attended for the first one, once people hear about this, the first one, they'll be more the second, more the third, so. Just something to think about, that's all. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
I think, I think Jim just wants to see a hooptop band.
Hawaiian shirt night, I think is what he wants.
All of the above. Um, we can, we can explore that with, uh, the property owner, um, a little bit. At this point, you know, I think he was comfortable with that layout, um, but we could, you know, see, especially after maybe the first one, if it, you know, depending on the attendance.
Okay. Um, Melissa, I think that we're all in favor of this. Uh, if you opted for two food trucks, would they fit? Was there any space issues putting them down in there?
Hmm. Christine, what is your opinion on that?
So, last year, uh, I believe the one food truck that we had, it was even separate from the actual space, and I think that did work out pretty well because we were encouraging everyone to go into the, the local businesses anyways. Of course, they couldn't leave the designated space with a beverage, but it was very much free-flowing in that sense, so I think if, if there was demand for a second food truck, if they can be outside of the space, I, I don't see why that wouldn't work.
All right, um, I know mostly, you and I chatted about this this last week, um, but I have my general reservations about Thursday night, just in general, like, I think it's a, I think, well, I think we kind of agreed, you know, to, in, in, in the sense of like trial and error, right, was that a Saturday worked really well, right? So let's test Thursdays and see how well it works in the area, right? I mean, I think we've got common craft, we've got Wegmans that try and stuff up that way, you know, on different, you know, Sunday, Saturday, Thursday, and it's working out. Uh, but down in the, in the center, we'll see if it, I mean, the hope is that the enthusiasm from Saturday last year carries through and we get some, you know, weekday business down there, right? Uh, so I'll be curious to see that, that, I think that was my only, like, you know, oh, a Thursday, right? But, but again, that's me, as, as, you know, end of one. Um, so otherwise, I think it's great. Um, is there any chance that we're tying in the, I know you're doing the naming of the Pocket Park, is a contest that getting tied into this, or is?
Um, yeah, so currently we do have, you know, kind of an initiative going on with the naming of the, uh, Pocket Park, just for really fun and kind of civic engagement. We have, um, eighty-five, um, submissions to date, so, yeah, and so it closes on Friday, and, you know, working with, um, you know, Mr. Sagrino on terms of, you know, the process to, you know, how we will select them, um, so we will be back shortly, you know, to you on how that goes, on the process.
All right, we can pull it through.
Okay.
Uh, Joe, any other questions or comments?
Do you put in this one one?
I may, I have to try it.
All right, if there's something else, then retain a motion.
Oh, we have to, oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve four one-day liquor licenses at one-eighty-four Cambridge Street, September eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second, twenty-ninth, from four-thirty to eight-thirty P.M.
Second.
Hey, motion's made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, five-zero-zero.
Cheers.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Uh, five-seventy-one, use of the town common for a baby shower, that's super exciting. Is anybody here, uh, representing the folks for this? Maybe not? Don't, uh, just try to pull, is there a, is there a name on the request form? What was it?
Steven.
Steven Levine.
Okay. Steven, anybody that's representing for Steven, no? All right, well, I mean, we can still discuss this.
It's pretty straightforward, Mr. Chairman, um, from one to five on July thirty-first. Uh, less than twenty people, or about twenty people.
Oh, what day of the week is that?
Sunday.
Sunday?
Sunday. Sunday. Something else, but no one else was looking for it.
Is there a rain date? I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
Yeah, you go.
Not that he asked.
Um, any other questions?
Mike?
I, 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 I found it unusual when I, when I first, uh, looked at it, you know, on Friday. I understand weddings. I, I did just a bit of a head-scratcher for me, I didn't, do we now doing baby showers out there? I, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't, where do, where do we, at what point do we say, wait a minute, you know, what's next? Um, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm kind of uncomfortable with, because I'm okay with wedding. I've never been to a baby shower, so maybe that's why I'm, maybe that's why I'm hesitant, but, um, I, I, I guess not sure.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think that it's definitely something that we would contemplate as we look to, um, you know, review the town common policy. Um, and again, I mentioned it to Lynn, too, you know, what are some of those activities that we shouldn't necessarily, you know, request that someone asks permission for? You know, if twenty folks went to a playground or a park as a family, I don't think anyone would question them at all, but I do think that, you know, sometimes it can become a problem if two different groups show up and, and that they feel like they're ready to use the same area or whatnot, so. I think it's something that we'll have an opportunity to discuss moving forward as we, uh, consider, you know, making revisions and updating the town.
I'm just wondering, I mean, i- i- if they were asking for, for, for a specific portion of the, of the common, maybe just the gazebo area? Um, I mean, it almost sounds like we're shutting down the entire town common so that these twenty folks could have a baby shower over there. Um, I, I'd like maybe some more definitive area or, or, or something, I mean, I wa- I'd like people to feel free to go, you know, like they typically do on a Sunday, push their strollers through, they will bring their kids down, play a little frisbee or something. I, I, I know, I just have some, some reservations about the, the whole idea, yeah.
I will say that, uh, the common remains open when we provide, uh, use to, to different groups that come through. Anybody still uses the common as they see fit. We haven't had any issues, um, to date in terms of conflicts, uh, between different groups, but it's certainly a point well-taken that, I think it's something that we should contemplate, you know, what doesn't require, uh, board permission for, you know, a group or a family that wants to, to have something larger than just going to the park or going to the common. And I think it's something we should think about as to how we handle that going forward, so I agree with you. Yeah, Jim, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, either Paul or Lynn, when, when someone's granted use of the common, they given a document saying that they have use of the common? Is there, are they also being told that the public still has access?
We don't per se say the public, but we send them a letter that just says that it was voted last night, it was approved, and they can use it, but by, like Paul said, I mean, we're not shutting it down. And the guy that's pushing his kid in a carriage or is taking his kids up there to ride a bike has no idea that this event's going on, so he's not going to not do that.
Right, no, I, I have no issue with it, and frankly, they could have done this without coming to us, and we would never have known, but, um, but just to avoid, as, as Mike said, someone saying, oh, I rented the co- I borrowed the common for today, so you guys can't be here, just, it does need to be cleaned up a little as far as the process.
We add into the letter that says it's still open to the public.
Yeah, I, I'd be, I'd be good with that. It's a very good, valid, valid comment, valid concerns, and, uh, definitely something we should tidy up. Um, it hasn't been a problem to date, um, in terms of any conflicts, um, from different users of the common, so.
Sure. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, so real quick, I mean, going over both, both of Selectmen have said at this point it is, um, i- i- is both valid points, uh, but no one else is asking for the common that day. It's twenty people, if they just showed up and used it, what would we say? Nobody's going to do a thing, so this gentleman was good enough to come in and ask to use the common, part of the letter's going to say that the common's still open to the public, and my firm belief is that that common is there for the town to use. So, uh, we may have to clean up a few things here and there to, you know, let everyone know that, you know, it's not just, if somebody wants to walk that common or want to have their dog out there on a leash or play frisbee with their son or whatever it may be, they can still do that. So I'd be in favor of this, and also in favor of looking at the bylaws and maybe changing them a little bit just so we understand, people have a more understanding of what's going on.
Yeah, absolutely. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, like Selectman Runyon, I did kind of, it was kind of a head-scratcher at first, but, and I hear his points, two good points, but I really have no, no issue with it. As Selectman Runyon said, he did come to us and ask permission, and I don't think they're going to be taking, you know, twenty people in each corner of the common. I think they'll all be, he's asking for the gazebo, so I'm guessing they're going to put it right near there, and I was about, if he was here, I was going to call him husband of the year for trying to do this, but because he didn't, he didn't join us tonight, I will rescind that nomination. So I think it's kind of cool, let's, let's see what happens, and if there's a problem, we know, and then we know not to allow it again, so I don't know, I'm, I'm in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, uh, you know, it was funny, Lynn and I had a chocolate because, you know, when we're going over the agenda, uh, you know, it's like a catch-twenty-two, right? It's like, uh, you know, he could have just gone and done it, uh, or, you know, he, he felt like he needed to, to come to us for an approval, which I think is great because he's, you know, trying to follow the, the, the process, right? Uh, and whether it's twenty people for a wedding or twenty people for a baby shower, like, I mean, our, our town common's so big, you know, we're, we're so fortunate, I mean, it's not like we're like twenty people on Billerica Town Common, where it's like the gazebo and the three feet of land. Uh, you know, we're, we're very fortunate in Burlington to have a, a huge common where you can have twenty people having a great event and have something else, completely else going on the other side, and no one's bothered by it. Uh, you know, so I, I appreciate, you know, him taking the time to, to come and do this. Uh, as we review town common policy, we can definitely take a look at what makes sense and what doesn't, so we can post it on the website, and folks will have a clear understanding moving forward of what they, they, you know, can and don't need to come to us for. Uh, you know, knowing that the, the common's there and preserved for the use of the residents. Uh, but, yeah, man, good on you for, uh, I, I know he's not here, but I'm talking to him. Uh, good on you for, for throwing a baby shower on the common for your, for your wife and family, that's, that's great, congratulations. Uh, if you happen to watch this. Um, all right, are there no other comments or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, use of the town common on six-twenty, when is it?
Seven-thirty-one.
Where is it? Uh, yes, July thirty-first, uh, for baby shower, one to five.
Second.
All right, motion's made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, five-zero-zero. We can send them a clip of this and they can play for the baby sometime. But we got a full-on ten-minute discussion about whether that kid's baby shower will be able.
Maybe he couldn't escape his wife, maybe it's a surprise.
Maybe, yeah. That's why you log in. All right, five-seventy-two, block party for, uh, James Street. Do we have anybody here for that? Sir, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Great, yourself?
Doing okay for a Monday?
Excellent.
All right, tell us what you're doing.
So, uh, we're just trying to put together our third annual, uh, block party. It's, uh, nine households, um, there are kids that keep joining the street from moving in, and, uh, we just like to keep the tradition going. Pretty simple, straightforward, lots of fun, from ten A.M. to ten P.M. Um, we'll have a bouncy house on one of the lawns. Um, we won't block, um, any emergency vehicle, anything that's blocking the roads will be easily removed, uh, for people that are living on that street or emergency vehicles.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions? Joe?
No, this has been going on, this is the, did you say third, is this the third time you've done it?
Yes.
So, yeah, so, uh, we've never had any complaints from it before, so it's always been a good time, and I think, um, one of our Selectmen might have walked over there, it's pretty close to his house, at some point, he might have kind of ventured over and grabbed a burger or something. It's not with us right now, but he might have, we might show up.
Absolutely, please join us, we have plenty of food.
That's wrong with a burger.
That's absolutely not. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no, I love when neighborhoods do this, it, it promotes community, it promotes, I don't think people do this enough, and I love to see, uh, when people do this, and, uh, you know, we're always stuck in our, in our homes now in front of our, our screens and stuff, so, uh, full support, love it, have a great time.
I appreciate it, thank you. Joe?
I think it's a great idea, like, uh, Mike said, uh, more neighborhoods should be doing, my neighborhood, we have the, we have neighbor day after labor day, which is the week after labor day, we all do the same thing. We might get together a few more times throughout the year, but, but I, I wish more neighborhoods would do this, it's, it's a great thing.
Uh, yeah, I agree, you know, I, I, you're one of a couple that, that come before us yearly and, uh, do this, it's fantastic. Um, I don't know, now that, now that Selectman Espel lives on my street, my street likes mine, uh, Prudential Road, maybe we should down Prudential Road and have a, have a block party down there.
Shut it right down.
Just shut it right down, just a major thoroughway to Billerica, we'll just close the whole thing right there. No, this is great, I have, I have no qualms about it, I think it's, it's great, you guys, you know, uh, have a good time down there, so. Um, I'll maintain motion.
I'll make a motion to approve James Street, August thirteenth, uh, twenty-two, ten A.M. to ten P.M. for block body. With the invitation of all Selectmen to come.
Second.
All right, motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, five-zero-zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you, have fun.
Have a good time.
Hope you get a good weather.
Start's at one, guys.
All right, next on five-seventy-three, use of the town common for the Indian Association of Grape Boston.
Oh, Indians, Americans of Burlington.
Oh, good gravy. Indians, Americans, Indians, Americans from Burlington, come on down.
Change this.
How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Hello?
Good.
Thank you for putting us on the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Absolutely.
As you can see, some of my team members are here, some of them are on their way. So I just want to point out the agenda has the wrong date in it. It's supposed to be September twenty-fifth, not August.
Chairman? Sorry, I think we have...
Two different groups.
Two different groups, two different events.
Oh, IAGB?
IAGB, we have the backup and the application for IAGD.
For flag hosting, yes. I think there's...
Okay, so two groups, two events, only one was posted tonight.
That's who emailed us to say change it, so I'm not sure.
I did email...
To change it, though, to this topic.
Oh, okay.
That's why we changed it.
They're not here.
Some, some little confusion, no worries. Okay, so to be clear, Indian Association of Greater Boston is not here tonight?
No.
I don't see them. I don't know if they're on the call.
Probably still go ahead and deal with that. But we can't do anything for...
IAG?
Worries because it's not on the agenda. What was the, the original date for the event was gonna be August fifteenth?
So August fifteenth is IAGB host doing the flag hosting, that's completely different.
Okay, so for Indian Americans for Burlington?
Yes.
I'm just gonna take a non sequitur for a moment, what was the date for that event?
September twenty-fifth.
Okay, so that we can get you back on our August agenda for approval? I wanted to make sure there was time in between your date for approval, because otherwise we'd be in a whole different kind of...
I did request to be on this agenda because we wanted to start, like, reaching out to our vendors, and everybody's asking, people are ready to, like, block that, that date. So I did request, I did send in the request form and requested to be on the July eighteenth agenda.
Okay.
So...
So just a minor mishap, no worries. I think I said to say that you can still advertise with a date, because we have no problem with you guys doing that on that date. Joe, is there something you wanted to say, or?
No, just real quick, I was gonna say, this is, this is an event that's been going on for a little while, right?
Last four years.
Yep, yeah, I think we've all been to it at least, at least once if not twice. So I know there's a glitch somewhere in the makeup of emails and going back and forth that it is not on the agenda for tonight, but I can also tell you that... I don't think there's a person up here that's gonna say no to it. So if you need to contact your people and get everything down, maybe we could have a quick special vote on this with the, Paul, is there something we could do for that? Or should we just wait till the next meeting?
For this one, we're gonna have to wait till the next meeting.
Okay, all right.
Oh, it's not possible to do like an email voting or any sort of that? It's just I would hate, if anybody had reservations, I would hate to, like, go out to my sponsors and say, yeah, write a check, we're definitely doing this.
So it's the, what was the date?
September twenty-fifth.
Yeah, okay, so there's nothing booked for September twenty-fifth? We'll add you in right now on the calendar so that, you know, nobody can...
Yep.
Call in the meantime. They would have to come before the board as well, so, and you will be on the next meeting that's, you know, available, so.
Awesome.
Okay, so consider it booked, the vote will be a formality.
Yes.
And you can advertise, that way there's no hangups, that the date is cleared, everything's good.
Okay.
Because Joe's right, there isn't one of us that's gonna say no to this.
Mr. Chairman? One caveat, we're not gonna dance this year.
You talked to Ranjini about that, that's not my department. We do, however, have a rain date to request as well, the following Sunday, so both of those we were gonna request.
All right, so we'll just make sure that's clear with Lynn, and then we'll bring it back in August for the vote. Everybody here said Mike was dancing this year?
That would be October second?
Yes, the following Sunday, we're hoping it won't rain.
I don't have anything there either, so I'm putting it in.
You're talking about Diwali?
Diwali, yes. And this year's theme, I came prepared, so I have to say it. It's Samaya, means equal considerations for all human beings, is going to be our theme. But of course, it's food, dance, the usual.
Absolutely. Okay.
Awesome. I'm off the hook, yes.
Off the hook for now, but we're still looking forward to it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for the mix-up.
Yes, no worries.
Sure. All right, so... Do we wanna, is anybody coming for?
I, she's one of my neighbors, I can reach out to her and see the story.
We sent the agenda out with the IAG on it. She corrected us and had us change it to this one.
Sure, because I think she assumed that that was the only thing on it. It's fine.
Yeah, so they probably aren't aware that, you know...
All right, then let's go ahead and postpone five seventy-three for now, unless somebody...
Well, there's a...
Oh, we don't need them here to approve it. That's right, I'm sorry. So let's go ahead and talk about this. This is the seventy-fifth Independence Day. It's by raising slash holding the flag of India in the US for August fifteenth. So let's discuss this, then. Because that's the intended agenda anyways.
This was the event we went to last year, we held the flag following.
Yes, yep. So, yep. So I mean, we've done it before.
Just for the record, it's a handheld flag, it's not mounted, permanent.
Correct.
It's not in the ground, it's a handheld flag, so.
Correct. Yep, we held it. Any questions, comments on this?
That's on Monday.
Is it the fifteenth?
Six thirty PM.
Okay.
August fifteenth.
Oh, so it's the night of our meeting?
Oh, is it really, oh, it was tied at six thirty, oh, gosh.
That's why I was just looking it up, like, that's, why does that sound familiar? So we probably won't be there for that.
Yeah, I mean, we can, you know, maybe either jump over or have them come here real quick at four six?
It's at six thirty, so.
Yeah, I mean, it could have been at six. It's start time, I mean, it's only about a fifteen or twenty-minute program.
Well, do we want to give them the space from five thirty on? And that way, if we can pop over there and they can adjust, we can be there?
If they feel comfortable with, I mean, whatever.
I mean, I'd like for at least one of us to be there, just, you know, but I mean, all right, let's, so if someone wants to amend the time to five thirty, and that way we can talk to them about one or a couple of us being there, and then if not, they can do it at six thirty. They can advertise as they feel. All right? Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll adjourn to motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve use of the town common for the Indian Association of Greater Boston for August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, five thirty, five thirty PM and after.
So I could, okay, motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Five zero zero?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
She's actually a neighbor, so I can reach out to her and...
Perfect.
Take care of it.
Perfect. All right. Moving right along. Five seventy-four, fuel storage license for twenty-five through twenty-seven Network Drive.
Public hearing.
Mr. Buckley, what?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. All right, so then, oh, I didn't bring my cheat sheet, Lynn, so we... All right, so we need to open the public hearing, I can do that without a vote, correct? And then we just need to take a vote on the as... Okay, so who wants to make a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the advertisement as written.
Okay.
Second?
Made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero zero to accept the advertisement as written. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Buckley, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board. For the record, Robert Buckley, Reuben Bronson. May I indulge the chair for a second before I begin?
Sure.
I would just like to compliment the presentation that was made earlier this evening by Melissa and the questions that the board asked. I think that, I know that someone on the board asked what the vacancy rate was in the town. As we all know, offices strained right now and remain strained, but what Burlington has done over the last couple of years and the breadth of it and interrelationships between all of the various components of the community, commercial leases roll on a basis, so the data that you're looking at may not be technically what you want to make decisions on, but what you've done is you've positioned the town extremely well so that when those time periods come up, people will want to stay here. And that is, it's a subtle message that you deliver by doing some of the planning you've done and positioning the town, be it through life science and other issues. And just on life science, the reason Melissa referred to some of the retrofitting that's going on, a lot of the buildings in Burlington are not capable of being retrofitted, but what they are capable of is supporting all the industries that will be attracted to the life science industries. So I want to compliment the planning that's going on and the presentation. I thought that was one of the best presentations I've seen. I go all over the state on these projects. It shows to the community, the greater community, the, not the Burlington greater community, but the greater community that Burlington is thinking and is a place where you want to be. So I just want to compliment you on that, because it's very good.
Thank you.
With that being done, I'm here this evening for the Broad Institute in Veracel, two of the life science companies that are relocating their operations, a portion of their operations in Cambridge to twenty-five Network Drive. In connection therewith, they're requesting a, they need emergency generators for the research they're doing so that they will not be interrupted in terms of their research. Because of the size and the gallonage here, it's a permit under state law coming before the Select Board. We've been to the fire department, who has signed off on this. There'll be two generators, there'll be adequate containment or overflow containment for each, and based upon the comments we've received, there seems to be no issue with those with the regulatory responsibilities. So you have the package, you show the locations, and again, it's because of the, their diesel because natural gas and electricity can be interrupted, and diesel tends to be there and can be used. And the volume is required because of, you can't have their research interrupted for any significant period of time, so there's an insurance factor. So I'll answer any questions that the Select Board may have.
Gentlemen, any questions? Mike?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Buckley, has the Board of Health had a chance to take a look at this yet?
Well, the Board of Health, in terms of the hazardous materials, yes.
Okay, I'll say it. Okay, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody else? Paul?
I thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, just curious, that's a decision for diesel versus like a natural gas?
Well, that's because natural gas, you can always have a broken line, and you could have an interruption in service that is unpredictable. I mean, you saw it in Andover a few years ago with the consequences there, and electricity the same way. I think that the preference would be not to have diesel, but because of the sensitivity of the research, same with hospitals, you tend to go with diesel because it's there and it's not gonna be interrupted. It can always be delivered.
Thank you.
Sure. Bob, in terms of noise, you know, any smell, all that's being mitigated?
Yep, it's an enclosure, there'll be sound attenuation, there are no buzzers, but it's not, there will be a test, they test these for operations periodically, but all that will be controlled.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, Joe?
Periodically, you mean, once a week?
Yes, right. It's like a...
Well, most of them want to run their generator at least once a week, right? So here are, yeah. And it's in a spot where no one's really got a, no residents up there, so it's not gonna affect anybody, so actually no reason not to support this.
Anybody else? Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll turn to the public, it's a public hearing. Anybody in the public who want to make a comment?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, seeing as no one said anything.
Okay, you have a motion in second to close the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Public hearing is closed. Any further discussion, gentlemen, on the topic at hand?
I'll make a motion to approve fuel storage license, twenty-five and twenty-seven Network Drive.
Second.
Okay, motion's made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero zero, Mr. Buckley?
Thank you for your time and consideration, and thank you for the indulgence in the beginning. You deserve it.
Thank you. All right, next up, we got another public hearing, five seventy-five, liquor license violations for Border Cafe and the Treasury. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, need someone...
Mr. Chairman, I think there are two separate public hearings technically.
Oh.
So if I can just give a little background and start, and then we'll do them one at a time.
Do you want to do background on each of them in their public hearings?
I want to give an overall background. Chief Brown is here, if there are any questions on the process or anything like that, but I know that you guys have received a detailed memo previously...
Yep.
In terms of how this works, but...
All right, well, so then, let's open everything up, and then I'll turn to you.
Sure.
All right, so opening the public hearing, I just need a motion.
Make a motion to open public hearing?
No, motion for the advertisement as written.
Make a motion for advertisement as written?
Second.
Okay, motion's made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero zero. So we accepted the advertisement as written, and the public hearing is open.
Paul?
Floor's yours.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the town considers the serving of alcohol to be very serious business and a privilege. And we take it very seriously, so we want all the residents to know that on a regular basis, we perform alcohol compliance checks on our licensed establishments. And the police department very recently had done one, and unfortunately, we have two license holders that failed that exam. And I think you're starting with the Border Cafe tonight, but I just wanted to let the public know that we are on top of this, and we do on a regular basis check these establishments for compliance, and we do have an outstanding record in town of compliance. But, you know, in this case, we do have a couple of establishments that, you know, failed those compliance checks, and it's now up to the board to determine what the next step are. And again, I think the first advertisement is for the Border Cafe that you just included into the public hearing.
Okay. All right, so, Joe, turn to you for...
Yes, thank you. Myself and Mike, both on the alcohol subcommittee, so we met with, which one, we're talking about Border Cafe first?
Yep.
Okay, so we met with the gentleman from Border Cafe, we went over all the rules and regulations. It's, it's an error on their part, no question about it, but it's not done intentionally by any stretch of the imagination. Things like this do happen, not trying to bury them, but our rules and regulations state that he has to be closed for one day. Now, when I say closed, that means he has to, he can't sell alcohol that day. So he can still be open, he can still serve food and Coca-Cola and ginger ale and all the other stuff. He just, they just can't serve alcohol. He came in front of us, or she came in front of us, I should say, I'm sorry. The other one was a gentleman, so the Border Cafe came in front of us, and she was... She was fantastic, couldn't have been any more apologetic, sorry about everything. Myself and Mike had a nice meeting with them, they did pick a date, didn't they? Did they? Oh, she's, she's right there, I'm sorry.
Someone is coming, because Melissa was not available, so I believe it's the other.
Okay, so anyway, so we talked about it and everything went fine, so. Would you like to have her speak?
Yep.
Aye. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Representing Border Cafe. I know that...
That might be an audio thing. Is there a volume? I guess, all right, just one second. The audio in here is just a little low.
No worries.
All right, try it now.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Much better.
Okay. I just saying that I'm, thank you for hearing us tonight. I'm here representing Border Cafe. Melissa is in Brazil on her vacation, so I'm here in New Jersey, so just wanted to be here for you all.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Gentlemen, questions for the chief, for Susan, for Paul? Pretty straightforward. So for the first-time offense, it's a one-day suspension, the license, like Joe was saying, the date's been determined already, which is fantastic. So with that, let's go ahead and, because it's a public hearing? Got a, oh, more, Joe?
Yeah, just over quick, the date is going to be?
They picked Monday, the 25th, so as long as she confirms it, they want to stick with that.
Confirm the 25th, next Monday? Hi. You got to confirm the 25th, next Monday is the date?
That works, Susan?
Yes. Yes, the 25th.
Okay. And you can, like I said, you can still be open, but just can't serve alcohol that day.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
Because it's a public hearing, I'll open it to the public for any comments. Okay. Seeing none.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right. Okay, motion. Paul, sorry. These are two separate public hearings, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Permission before I close it, that was?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Motion made in second. Close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Border Cafe is closed. Any further discussion from the board? Okay. Seeing none, wants a motion?
Make a motion to approve the closing of Border Cafe the 25th. No, 26th?
25th.
25th?
Yep.
Okay. 25th.
Okay. Motion's been made?
For no alcohol. Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Five zero zero for the 725 suspension of the one-day license. Susan, thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being so cooperative. It was great. The girl that was here that came in, she was wonderful. Really nice. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Let's roll right into the next one. Going to go ahead and open the public hearing for the Treasury violation. Need somebody to make a motion for the advertisement as written?
Somebody.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Five zero zero for the advertisement as written. Public hearing is open. All right. Treasury, Paul?
No further comments from me. Mr. Chairman, other than, once again, reiterate the fact that we take the service of alcohol very seriously here in town, and we will continue to do alcohol compliance checks. And what we're here to do tonight is to discuss a punishment within our bylaws for the board to assess on the offender, so...
And this is also a first offense, correct?
Yes.
Anything else from the Alcohol Subcommittee?
Same as the last one. The gentleman's right there on the screen, I can see him now. He came in. We had talked with him. He was very nice, apologetic for what had happened, like I had said prior to this. I said, it's an accident, this is the first time this happened to either one of these restaurants. He actually picked the date of tomorrow, wants to do it tomorrow right away, wants to get it over with, so this was bad. Anything else?
No, no. Both, Select Morandi is, for some reason, both establishments were contrite, and we went over the goals and procedures and reiterate how important it was, tip certification, all that, and we talked about the both employees, and now they were spoken to and just were ended up happy that it was, that everyone was very cooperative. I'm glad, I didn't even know that the police department did these checks. I think that's great that, you know, we just keep a check and balance on it, because it's very important to make sure that we serve alcohol in this town, it's somewhat of a legal age, so kudos to the police for doing that, and no, nothing further.
Okay. Anything else, Jim? Mike? Okay. I'm sorry, sir, your name?
Devindra Patil.
Okay. And you're comfortable with the 19th?
Correct.
Being for you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Public hearing?
If you have anything to add, did we miss anything? Is there anything that you'd like to add as the police department?
Sir, you have everything. Mr. Sagarino laid it out. I haven't nothing.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to ask you, I've been sitting here a long time waiting, so I want to leave it at that.
All right. Open it to the public, this is a public hearing. Any comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero zero to close the public hearing. Any further discussion from the board?
Make a motion at this point to close the Treasury as of tomorrow for alcohol. It will be the 19th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the 19th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Five zero zero for the one-day suspension of license for tomorrow for Treasury. Thank you, sir, for being here. Chief, thank you very much for being here, for sitting and waiting, and also for everything the police department does to help us out with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. You're all set for tomorrow.
Okay. Moving right along.
This is also a public hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Just need a motion for the advertisement as written.
I'll make a motion to accept the advertisement as written.
Second. Okay. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Five zero zero to accept the advertisement as written.
Sir, you here for this?
Yes.
Come on down.
Thank you.
We've only seen you on the screen before, I think.
Yes, I've been on most before. I didn't realize, the last one, I didn't realize that we were back to a live meeting, which is nice to see, so happy to be here.
Happy to have you.
Thank you for having us to entertain this request. Jeff Harrington, for the record, Director of Construction with Cambridge Network Solutions. The proposal in front actually ties in a little bit to the outstanding report of the economic development, where we'd like to service, provide services to the new location of Fort Burlington Woods. That site or location is served by all underground utilities. We are on the pole line out on South Bedford Street, so we'd like to extend from the utility pole line across the street in an underground fashion into the private property where we have an agreement with the landowner to provide service to Fort, number Fort Burlington Woods. The size of the cable that would be brought in will also service for other tenants, so we don't have to keep taking the street up more than once.
Okay. Gentlemen, questions, comments, concerns?
You, you, I'm sorry.
Mike's very excited.
Go ahead. Mike's always... Because you say you're only going 45 feet, but if you're going from South Bedford Street all the way up to, oh, you're not going all the way to Fort.
So, we're talking, no, yes, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. So then for the part of the public right away was that, but we are going to trench a little bit on the private property, and then we are tying into their conduit system that they own, and we're utilizing their existing conduit system to get to the building. So yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay. Mike, that was my only question. It's certainly more than 45 feet away from South Bedford.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Yeah, it seems pretty straightforward. I like to give something on a larger cable so that it can further service than just doing the one, have it come back and turn the road up again, so thank you for that. Because this is a public hearing, anybody in the public who wants to make a comment? Hey, seeing none?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Hey, motion's made in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Five zero zero to close the public hearing.
Gentlemen, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the grant of location of Cambridge Network Solutions, 60 South Bedford Street.
Second. Okay. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Five zero zero to approve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. 577, accounting, end-of-year transfers. Mr. Nizio, is this going to you first?
Thank you, Mr. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a housekeeping measure that we've taken at the end of the year, the last few years. A little bit of history is this used to be the bane of accountants' existence back in the day. You used to have to go to town meeting to do this, and you had to guess way earlier than you do now. Through the wisdom of the legislature, when they passed the Minnesota Modernization Act in 2016, they allowed for year-end transfers to be done with the approval of the Finance Committee, in our case, the WESME, and the Board of Selectmen, or with the mayor and the city council in the city. So the last few years, we've come to you with a list of a few transfers that needed to be made to sort of balance the books of the way the budget was approved. So I could, there was an attachment in the backup that outlined eight different transfers that were being made. I'll just go over them quickly, and then if you have any questions, just stop me, and I can certainly give you more details. So there was a couple of lines in the town meeting and reports that were overspent, that's, you know, with transfers coming from our legal budget, surplus in our legal budget, those, the reason for the overspending is mostly due to hybrid town meeting just costs more to do more. The tech guys had to set up and break down each day of September, of spring town meeting because of something that was going on in the high school. That's the first two. The third one is with the Select Board that has to do with three retirements for buyouts for sick time and vacation time for some long-term employees. So we cover that with some surpluses and other items. The Board of Appeals was just simply spent more hours than they were budgeted for, only by a few hours. The police special has to do with, fuel was over by quite a bit, which will just be offset by a transfer from the savings in occupancy, which is what we call utilities. So savings in heat and electric will cover the cost of fuel, but because of the way they're approved in two different buckets, we have to do the transfer to that. Significant one this year was with overtime in the fire department. Was a significant hit this year. They had not only the number of injuries or illnesses they had this year, but also the severity of them. We had, you know, 10 members that were out four months plus with some pretty serious injuries. So that is being covered by a surplus in the police budget under salaries, and that was due to, it took us a whole year to hire the captain when Captain Kirchner went to Deputy Chief Kirchner. That process took, you know, almost a full year, that when Dan, Captain Hanafin was just appointed not that long ago, and with two open patrol positions and the vacancies between retirements and when you hire somebody, created a little surplus there. The Disability Access Commission was, again, just, I think it was three extra hours than what was budgeted for the recording. And then the library was a similar retirement of a long-term employee. So happy to get into any of the details on any of these, but like I said, this is a housekeeping thing we do at the end of every year.
Thank you. Gentlemen, questions, comments? It does, Mr. Wallace, pretty straightforward. Thank you from the economic staff for handling this, putting this together for us.
Let me ask you this, ask you before you put it down. How are those 10 employees in the fire department that got to work yet? Or the majority of them?
Majority are back. Still a couple that out. So unclear if it would be a problem this year, but watching it closely, trying to do some other things to try to help, help with the overtime also.
Thank you. All right. Gentlemen, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the end-of-year transfers.
Second.
Okay. Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Five zero zero. All right. We've got Sculpture Park and Town Common Policy back on here as postponements. I already know a few things before we address them. So those will be on, in August. Let's go ahead and jump to 584 minutes. We've got June 13th regular meeting, and then June 15th small cell meeting. Those were your backup? Anything? Edits? Things?
Yeah, just real quick, Mr. Chairman, thank you. On the June 13th meeting, I'd like to have it changed. Says members present, goes through the list, and I don't know who James Morandi is, but I'd like to have Joe put in there, please. Joseph. Listen, I don't know if you people know this, I'm in big trouble right now, but that's okay.
James Morandi from Sunmark.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, so with that...
My brother.
With that edit identified, we can still approve that with the edit marked, right? Or does that have to come back?
I don't think it has to come back.
Then we can approve, it's a simple name thing. We don't have to...
Yes. I agree.
It is.
All right. Anything else, Joe? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes with the corrections as submitted.
Thank you. Second. Okay. Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Five zero zero to approve the minutes with the edit called out. All right. 581, Subcommittee Reports. Who wants to start?
I'll start. Okay. From the Fire Department. Phase one of the Public Safety Communication Project is moving along. Members of the Fire Department have begun training on the new radio communications consoles in Fire Dispatch, which will be likely going in live, going live next week. Then both police and fire participated in a kickoff meeting with representatives from ProPhoenix, which is an all-encompassing public safeties, public safety records management platform for both departments. Want to congratulate and wish Fire to Richard Hovas well, as he will be retiring next month after 31 years of service. So that's the Fire Department. On the Sculpture Park, all but one of the new sculptures have been installed. The file one will hopefully be installed on July 20th. The following hot sculpture has been purchased. It's getting some touch-ups from the artist, and it's going to be reinstalled on its new base on the common near the Havik statue sculpture. After these two are installed, we'll have a total of nine sculptures, which include the two on the common. The Sculpture Park Committee met with the town administrator, DPW, and engineering to discuss site improvements. The engineering will survey, is going to survey the site and help select the best[1525.76] is going to survey the site and help select the best location for the new pathway. Um, and, but due to the workload of the departments and vacations, it, this time of the year probably won't happen until the fall. Uh, and we're looking forward to meeting with the, uh, historical commission in the next couple of weeks so they can, we can explore ways of working together and the chairperson of the Sculpture Park Committee intends to come before the select board after that meeting, um, to work out an understanding for the long-term future of the park and at that time she'll present, uh, select board with the committee's long-range plans for outdoor artwork in Burlington. And one final thing is, uh, Burlington's Public Safety Night, August third from five to seven P M up at Wegmans. That's the multiple police departments there, multiple fire departments there, uh, DPW will be there. Wegmans is providing entertainment and food, there'll be a dunk tank, games. Um, it's in the garage, so weather's not an issue. So, uh, usually very well attended, police canines, comfort dogs, you name it, it's there. Marky calendar, uh, Wednesday, August third, it's Burlington's version of National Night Out, but we do ours on a different day and a little bit different, so that's it for me.
Awesome.
Always, always a great event, Jim, that's always, always well attended, it's a wonderful event.
Are you giving the dunk tank this year, Jim?
Heck no.
Again, you and your man.
No, we do have a couple volunteers, but I am not one of them. I'll take the first dunk.
I'll edit that list. All right, Mike, you ready to go next?
Sure, sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, over the weekend, a, a segment on Channel Five kinda caught my eye, it's called, uh, Five for Good, they, they have the feel-good stories from time to time and, uh, they highlighted local Burlington resident Doug Hastings in this, in this piece. Some of you may have seen it and somebody posted it on Facebook today, I thought it was a great story. Uh, Doug has made it his mission to donate blood in one hundred cities and towns, different cities and towns across Massachusetts. And he's well on his way, he's already, just completed his eighty-seventh blood donation. Um, I don't know what town it was, I know he's heading to Melville, it's next month, month or two months, whatever there's a timeframe between, uh, when you can donate, so I thought it was a wonderful story. He has a goal, uh, actually of donating blood, uh, in, in all fifty states as, as well, so I just wanna say congratulations to Doug Hastings, I, you know, I love those kind of stories, they're, um, you know, doesn't surprise me that, uh, you know, people in Burlington are often, uh, noted for their, for their, uh, good deeds. Uh, secondly, the, I, I just wanted to report, uh, the town exercised our, our right of first refusal on the property at, at one nineteen South Bedford Street just, uh, just, just two weeks ago or, or a week and a half ago or something like that. Um, I wanna thank the, the, the residents who have been there for the last twenty-five years. They left the house in really very good condition, um, I, and so I wanna thank them for being good stewards of the property for the past twenty-five years and I wish them well, um, in their, in a new chapter of their life, uh, in another part of Massachusetts. So, um, the house, again, the house is in really good condition given its age, we're getting some prices right now from our facilities, uh, division and hope to have that, uh, narrowed down for you, um, very shortly and I do wanna say, you're exactly right, town council did an outstanding job and in putting all of that documentation and what it's like a closing on, on, well, he did it in, in, in record-breaking time, short, in less than a week, okay, he did the title, everything, everything. Uh, to, to make this, uh, uh, to make things happen, uh, for those folks, they had to have cer- certain things done by a certain time, so uh, congratulations to, uh, Jeff from, uh, town council office. Thanks, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, Joe?
Nothing.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I know as mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I do wanna, uh, extend my personal congratulations and thanks to Captain, uh, Skin for his twenty-five years of service to the, uh, the force, that's awesome and he's well-loved and respected around town, so it's really, uh, great and I'm glad that he's gonna be around in a limited capacity as a special police officer. Um, August sixth to celebrate Burlington on the common, I know the Parks and Rec Department's hard at work, it, uh, putting everything together, it's always a great day. Uh, here the musical, um, act we have is phenomenal, I'm not familiar with him, but and we also have the fireworks at night, so it's always a good day, uh, around town and I'm looking forward to it. Lastly, you know, um, kind of a fun one, I wanna give a hat tip to all of our Ripken teams that have been playing in these tournaments, um, all around New England. Um, the Burlington Baseball Association, Association, the last two weekends hosted the twelve U tournaments, um, the state tournament last weekend and the regionals this weekend and I went to the, a bunch of the games last weekend and they're great events, I've never seen Simons Park that electric, uh, there was a, a double header in the championship game, it was double elimination and unfortunately the twelve U's came up short, but they were in the regionals this weekend, um, here at Simons Park and just well done to Burlington Baseball for running those events, there's a lot of people there, people up on the hill, it's a great atmosphere, it's a lot, a great take. Uh, the eight U's made the states, the nine U's and ten U's made the districts and the eleven U's are our state champion and they are presently up in Lewiston, Maine, um, they are two and O in their quest to become regional champion and tomorrow they play at noon against Andy Valley, Maine, so we wish all these teams the best of luck and it's just so great to see these kids out there playing hard and we're in Burlington on their chest and it's just a, a great time for the town and a great thing for the town, these kids are representing us, so just wanted to say thank you to all the kids and parents, everyone putting that together, it's good stuff, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, hear, hear, that's, that's wonderful to hear. Um, just gonna run through, uh, some stuff real quick, so first off, uh, huge thanks to everyone who helped put together and participated in the Fourth of July parade, uh, a couple of short weeks ago, uh, it was very well attended, uh, we all walked in it. Uh, we, we couldn't have asked for a nicer day and, uh, you know, it's just a, a, a great time all around and I'm, I'm very much looking forward to next year already. Um, Transportation Committee is working on a final report, they're beginning to, to start the discussion around that uh, and drive towards, uh, bringing that to us in the fall. Uh, D I Committee will be on our agenda for August, uh, for their second quarterly report. Uh, Paul and I have a, uh, meeting the week after this one, is it next week for the comms with Colin Center?
Yes.
Next Wednesday, uh, to begin discussing, there was a, a lag in time, uh, with some stuff, we're beginning to discussing the, uh, the communications plan, uh, initiative that we've been, uh, talking about and approved. Uh, I'll let Paul, Paul delve into this in a minute, but, uh, starting tomorrow's gonna be a heat wave this week. Uh, so whenever we get a heat wave, I always ask folks, check on neighbors, elderly neighbors, pets, make sure everyone's drinking water, staying hydrated, it's hot, it's humid, it's gonna be rough. Uh, so please just check on folks, you know, if you feel like you're, you're not sure, make a wellness call, that's what the police department's for. Uh, I'd rather be safe than sorry. Um, and then, uh, lastly, uh, I think probably from now until things start changing, I'm gonna start saying that, um, we need people to volunteer for things here in town. Um, committees, subcommittees, boards, uh, groups, events, um, volunteerism is at an all-time low. Um, and it is becoming, uh, a, a real problem when it comes to making sure that things get done. You see us, you see other boards and committees, we're all very well committed to the things that we're handling and when you, when we wanna do more, we wanna bring things back, we wanna make things bigger, better, we need to rely on each other as a community. Um, and so this is now going to be my bi-weekly plea to you, uh, to, you know, where you can, give time, give an hour a week, uh, five hours a week, you know, uh, five hours a month, I don't, I, I don't care. Uh, you know, please just give, give yourself some time for the community, it's what makes us stronger, it's what brings us together. Um, so that's, that, that's what I'm asking. Um, with that, Paul, turn to you for our, our administrative report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have two items, uh, the first one, and you touched upon it briefly i- in your report, um, uh, we do have a heat wave projected to run from tomorrow through Saturday, uh, just to wanna repeat what, uh, Chairman Pres said, but please do look out for your neighbors and check on them, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be pretty hot. Uh, as a result of that, the town will be opening, uh, the human, the human services building as a cooling center uh, for any resident that wishes to, uh, needs to get out of the heat or wants to come down and just cool off for a few hours. Uh, the human services building at sixty-one Center Street, uh, that will be starting tomorrow, uh, eight thirty A M to seven P M, uh, Tuesday through Friday. And then on Saturday, uh, we'll also be open, opening that facility from ten A M in the morning to, uh, three P M in the afternoon, uh, so if anybody needs to cool off, please do. Uh, it's open, everybody's welcome, uh, to come in and, uh, you know, cool off. Um, things, air conditioning usually breaks, uh, when you're in the middle of a heat wave, uh, at inopportune times, so uh, if anybody needs to use that, um, amenity, please do come down. Uh, we will have, it'll be staffed by, uh, some volunteers from the, uh, municipal reserve corps that we have through the Board of Health, uh, as well. Uh, so we will, we are looking forward to hosting some folks there for the heat wave. Uh, lastly, I wanna, uh, report on some good news, uh, over the past several years. Uh, we've been working really hard to, uh, enhance our relationship with Congressman Seth Moulton's office. Um, and when we, due to the efforts of the town and his staff members, we've been really, uh, working together, uh, frequently meeting with members of his office and, um, I'm happy to report, we're not all the way here, there yet, but, um, Congressman Moulton has included a million dollars for Burlington's PFAS project at the Mill Pond. Um, is submitted to the federal budget. Uh, like the state budget and the town budget, there's several different, uh, layers that it needs to go through, but it was selected by the congressman's office through a very competitive, uh, process and we're in competition with other, uh, communities within our congressional district and I just wanted to say, we have our fingers crossed that, uh, we'll be provided that funding, but, uh, we're very grateful, uh, to Congressman Moulton's efforts and we look forward to continued, uh, work together to strengthen our relationship, uh, with him, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you, Paul. Uh, gentlemen, before we adjourn, just a reminder, we are gonna be adjourning into executive session, so whoever makes the motion, please just include that as a part of it. It would require a roll call, yes.
There's a motion on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, to talk about the purpose and the chapter of law that we're heading into executive session for, so.
Perfect. So whoever's gonna make that motion, just please, uh, include that. Jim, this goes like this.
I tried, I tried my best. Okay, uh, I make the motion to adjourn, uh, to, uh, executive, uh, executive session pursuant, pursuant to General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A six. The select board will convene to executive session after adjourning from general session to not return to consider the purchase exchange leasehold value of real property as the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Yeah, okay, do a roll call vote, so, Mr. Espello?
Aye.
Mr. Morandi?
Aye.
Mr. Ronan?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Segas?
Aye.
Chair both side, five zero zero. All right. Back to the public.